May 23 meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. First item of business is approval of minutes from our May 9 meeting.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? By voice vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. New business conquered crossing open space residential development. We have received some new plans.
Can you see him?
Yeah, I see him.
Mr. Campabasso is coming. Pete Campabasso, the attorney?
I haven't seen him, no.
No, he should be up the stairs right now.
Okay. We will pause momentarily while things come together.
Wes Easlin.
Yeah, so that's, thank you.
Everybody stills easel, don't return that.
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
So I brought plans that Mr. Campabasso gives his presentation. He wants to kind of go in sequence of what we're having the attachments. I know we've had a bunch of different plans to the board, all the ones that we sent over.
You ready, sir?
I'm ready with your.
Laura's yours.
Okay, thank you. My name is Peter Campabasso. I'm an attorney with offices in the Creek Park Street in Lummester, Mass. I represent Harbor Classic Homes, who is seeking to file an application for an open space residential development project. I think I'd like to just sort of maybe give a brief recap of what has taken place so far, where I think we're at, and then try to speak tonight about the plans that we have here for you to review to continue to discuss and get some feedback. So I think what has happened prior to tonight, we have been actively involved, you know, in discussions with Trevor, involved with other boards in the town to get some preliminary approvals via the zoning board and variances for the roadways. But essentially, according to the open space procedure, the pre-application conference and pre-application submittal has taken place. We did have a meeting several years ago before we filed for any variance with the planning board where there was a preliminary discussion. Town boards were involved. Those are the first two steps in the process for the open space application. When that happened, we had the issue about the roadways with the different zoning classifications, so we had to go before the zoning board to get the variances to allow the entrances on Clark Street and Century Way to be utilized for the open space. So we're now at what I consider to be the pre-application process. We haven't prepared the application for the open space special permit, but we're at the pre-application stage, hoping that we can finalize that and actually prepare the preliminary plan and submit the application for the special permit. And I think the pre-application discussion, we had our site visit. We've had multiple site visits, I think, and we're at the stage now where we're trying to discuss the different plans based on what we've, you know, discovered at the site and what we think makes sense to come forth with a proposal. Knowing that the open space, the purpose of the open space special permit is to preserve open space if there's any historical or archaeological resources that are on the site, to try to preserve those, to protect the municipal water supply, to promote common sense or sensitive siting of development in relation to the open space, and to have some type of harmony and flexibility with the lot. When we come in with the plan, we have to demonstrate certain things which promotes that purpose. And what we're hoping to do is sort of walk you through tonight how we arrived at the different plans, get some feedback to see what the planning board likes, in hopes that we can come to some type of a consensus. Now, we haven't checked every box yet, but we're in the process of doing that. We think we can give you enough detail tonight where we can get some good feedback, in hopes that we can begin thinking about submitting the application. I think the first plan that you have in your packet is an existing conditions plan. Wetlands have been flagged, conservation areas, sensitive areas have been designated. When we did the site walk, the conservation agent was there. We have had discussions about getting other individuals out there. Based on the last meeting, we did have the landscape architect also go out to the site, had some discussions with Wes. We're in the process of better identifying the existing trail system that's out there. We don't have all of the exact locations of the trails yet. It is a big site, it's approximately 90 acres, so there's a lot out there. But I think we can show different location points where the trail system comes into the project and runs through. But those will be identified. And what, one of the things that has been discussed, and one of the things we have to do, is show what a conventional plan would look like. And that's the second plan that's in the packet. So based on the zoning bylaws, if a traditional subdivision plan were to be proposed based on the subdivision rules and regulations, this is what a preliminary subdivision plan would look like, based on roadway layout, lots, lot sizes, for the sole purpose of creating roadway utilities, buildable lots that conform to the zoning bylaw. And that's what this second plan does. And if you, if we had color maps, then we could overlay the preliminary traditional plan, conventional plan, over the site, the site context map. You'd see where the location of all the wetlands and conservation areas are that would identify, based on open space residential development, you're trying to stay away from, preserve, and protect.
Which showing the 117s is shown in green. The 117s are shown in green, and the 117s that are in front here, the red, I believe, is the, all the buffer zones the city has, and this they have.
So I don't, I don't have those here, so I think maybe they're shown on, okay, yeah. There are red lines and there are green lines on the plan that show the different wetland areas and buffer zone areas. Okay? So now, if we were to, you see the conventional plan. If we were to go with the open space residential plan. Okay, so I think if you look at the third, the fourth?
The fourth page.
The fourth page.
After the initial?
The fourth page in your packet.
Actually, this is what this is.
Is that it? The fourth page. This is the concept hand we wanted to look at. The fourth page in the hand. So using the criteria that are established and set out in the open space bylaw, what you see before, on this sheet, is a plan that shows 93 units.
Eighty-seven.
No?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven units. All of these lots are per the regulations. Fifty feet of frontage, 50 feet width, approximately 8,000 square feet of lot size. Those are the dimensional regulations that are spelled out in the bylaw, which allow a proposal for units, for residential units. And when you do the calculations, utilizing how much area needs to be set aside for open space, the lot size has to be a minimum of five acres. There's approximately 90 acres here, so that's not an issue. The maximum density is one dwelling unit per 40,000 square feet, which puts us somewhere in the 93 unit area. Minimum lot area, 8,000 square feet, minimum frontage 50, minimum width 50. The front yard setbacks, 45 feet from an existing roadway, 15 feet from a new roadway. The majority of the units would all be based on a new roadway, so we'd be looking at no, less than a 15-foot front yard setback. And then you have the sidelines as well. When you look at a layout like this, what it does is it is removed, it creates the building envelope, if you will, where the units can be sited on the lot, based on the conservation areas that have been identified, the trail systems that have been identified to preserve the land. This type of a layout with the lots conforming to the regulations probably isn't the best design that the applicant could come forth and promote. So we have some alternatives.
Here's the number three first.
So this plan shows 93 units. There's a mix in here of single-family units and duplex units. These lots have larger frontage. Obviously duplex lots would have approximately 10,000 square feet in size above the 8,000 minimum, anywhere from 80 to 100 feet of frontage, more than the 50 feet of frontage. And it provides for a mix. And it keeps all of the units outside of the environmentally sensitive areas, and it stays within what we think is the best building envelope area for the site.
Is that sheet three that we have?
Sheet three, yes.
That's sheet three, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I think we have sheet five. This is the initial proposal, or one of the preliminary proposals that was submitted. This is the proposal that shows 76 single-family units within the same building envelope area on the site. This one does have a buffer, a 100-foot buffer between the new units and the boundary line for the condominium site that's underneath. And this one would be similar in size, the roadways are straight and angled. This was presented before we had any preliminary discussions with the landscape architect. I think the next.
So you said on this one there are 73?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six lots?
Seventy-six single-family. Single-family units, yep.
So this is, this is what created the conversation at the last meeting about what drives the next three sheets. And that's kind of where we, that really brought the conversation, I think, before the board, the last couple meetings that we got with the board members. I think we looked at that one quite a lot.
So based on the discussion we had the last time from the site visit, there were some comments about making the lots a little bigger, having it so that there would be better access to the open space, creating alleyway, and having a mix of single-family and duplex units. So what you see on this sheet, which I believe is sheet six, this has.
A mix of 76. It's still 76.
This is still 76. And you see on the out part, it's the single-family units, and in the middle part would be the duplex units.
So what we're showing here is 40 single-family lots, 18 duplexes. Still, to get to the 76 units, I know the comment at the last meeting was the 100-foot frontage, and so that's what we tried to accommodate, was the 100-foot frontage for the single-family lots, create a little more separation with the single-family lots.
And this one still maintains the 100-foot buffer between the boundary line with the condominium project.
And as Mr. Campabasso pointed out too, is what we're trying to create.
Entrance ways into the open space from the different areas for people to get in, with the intention that, you know, some parking spaces could be down here for other people that might want to get into the open space area. Sheet seven is just a different layout based on some of the feedback. This one still has 76 units, a mix of single-family units and duplex units. This one has an area in the middle that would be like a open space recreational area for the landowners, and still have the areas where people could access into the open space. However, this one does not have a 100-foot buffer between the units and the boundary line for the condominium project. So that's a difference there.
One thing to point out, it still does have, and I know we pointed out the last meeting, is we do have some parcels in the back of the single-family houses there, that we still do include those as part of this. Those parcels are still shown on this plan.
Correct. As are the lots down on the entrance way to Clark Street, where there's some separate parcels based on the roadway layouts. Then I think we have another conceptual layout, 78, with 78 units, again, a mix of, this is all residential, single-family units.
So what we were trying to do is.
Right up against the boundary line, there's no buffer on this one, between the open space land and the condominium project.
With the last four plans on there, we wanted to show you the two different options, one with the 100-foot buffer, one without the 100-foot buffer, but also all single-family and just a mix of single-family and duplex. We let you know, Alex, at the last meeting, that applicants would prefer to do single-family on this, but I know there was some conversation, I'll put a mix of duplexes and single-family, obviously making the mix, we can make the lots a little bigger. And so there's, there's a benefit, I guess, there with regards to the lot sizes, being the duplexes, but there's less return on the investment with the duplexes for the applicant.
So those are the conceptual plans. Essentially, the building envelope is primarily in the same area, if you will, but significant differences are, two variations have single-family units, two variations have single-family and duplexes, two variations have single-family up against the boundary line, single and two-family up against the boundary line. So there's a number of plans which show the different type of layouts based on the feedback we've received to this point. So, yeah, why don't we turn it over to the first chair to the board?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
So in this, on this concept plan, can you talk to the size of the parcels throughout the?
Mostly 8,000 square feet for the single-family lots.
So these are, okay, so these are all?
With the.
Frontage?
Eighty, eighty minimum is what we were looking at, it was 80 for the single-family.
And I think on the duplex lots, it would be more like 100.
100 foot for the single-family lot, for basically across the board, 100 feet.
So what types of homes would your client be proposing on it, in size, type? Because that's one thing we really never talked about. Just curious what your, what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah. Personally.
Between 1,800 and 2,000 square feet of homes. Trying to keep the size down, cost-effective for the buyers.
And typically one to two car garage?
They'd have to build a one-car garage.
Yeah, okay. And I don't think the duplex units would be substantially different. Probably would be approximately the same size.
Just offset them.
Right, just offset.
And would there be garages with the duplexes also?
Yes, yes. And so if you look at that, the blocks we show for the duplex, there's a bump out in the front of each unit, and that's where that garage would be.
The garage could be in front of the unit?
On the duplex, yes, on the duplexes it would be, where they'd be set up.
So at the last meeting, I spoke about potentially putting an alleyway along the rear in between the two, I wasn't necessarily envisioning parcels, per se, for each duplex, but an alleyway to access garages in the rear of the buildings, which would mean you'd probably have to have a wider, it's just, it's the way I've seen it done at other open space conservation developments, where it's, the Connoisseur Town Health units are all done on a single lot, and you have access points to the rear of each one, basically alleyways for access in and out for vehicles, accessing the garages in the rear of the buildings themselves. That way you have the front of the houses, or the front of the residential structures, with green space in front, and you don't have driveway access in the front. It's something we kind of, I think it says, even since in Arizona, we try to tend to get away from garages in front.
I see that, they have that in Devon, they're doing a couple of projects down there, where they run the alley through the back, and they beat each lot on the back side.
Right.
Still trying to find out what's the advantage of a home. It looks great on the street, but.
That's, that's, I think what we're looking for, you know, the aesthetic vision from the street.
I understand. People come into the back of their house, salespeople like the old days, salespeople, I don't know. Those are thoughts that go through my head.
And you said on the, the one with the mixed, single-family, duplex, single-family, and I don't know if it's different.
I tried to keep it, one of the mixed, I tried to keep in the frontage at 100 feet, is what I was trying to keep on those.
And this lot sizes?
Some of it, it varied depending where they sat on the curve and where they sat adjacent to the open space.
So nine to 12,000 about, I think I read.
Yeah, yeah.
So the nine, 9,000 square foot lots, 90 by 100 typically?
Well, I think most of those are probably on the curve, so it varied with the frontage, it might have been like 75 feet of frontage, but fanned out to like 125 feet to 130 feet.
On the back boundary.
Because the curves are so sharp, the lot fans out relatively quick, so by the time you get to the frontage, the width at the frontage is significant to get more space there. And I think that was the concern, is that the houses feel too close to each other when they're actually on the lot. So that's why I wanted to show them on the, on the plans, you guys.
And garages for the single families you're looking at, to the side of the house, anything in the rear, or thoughts on that? I know this is very preliminary, I'm just trying to get a vision of.
We just show up to the side of the house, if it's side entrance or front entrance, we don't show that detail yet. And I know in the regulation it calls for this, the allowance for a common driveway, we haven't got to that conversation yet, on to how those houses would sit in.
If we had, if we had units that have, duplex units that had a common driveway.
So you envision them being attached garages?
Correct.
Yes, on the side. We can have that discussion. I'm thinking maybe change it up here and there.
Well, and I think it's gonna, and I also think it's good, could be dictated by grade too, we could have some drive unders, where it may not even be a, you know, a standard garage at that point. Because some of the grades may dictate it to be a certain way, so, depending on what the law is. So I, if you want, I can point out, so, so the surveyors were out there end of last week locating the trails, and so they did give me, on a, they sketched up the location of, there's a major kind of trail that, I know we kind of walked a part of it, at least in regards to the roadway, kind of pointed out on the plan where they showed it, just so you guys have an idea. So they located up here, and it must be where the, I don't know if the land trust, I think a butts.
That's city land.
City land. So they said there was a trail that runs in here that actually crosses onto the subject property, and then crosses back off, and then runs out from this location here, then runs back in, and then runs back out of the site here. And that's where it ties into that, in the way they say it was well-used. And we walked that one kind of path at one point. And we walked that one kind of path at one point where it comes back down into the site, right, and then ties back into the location here. So there was one real well-defined trail within the site that obviously we would like to tie into that, and I think it ties back into what, at least the surveyor said it's been definitely been used out in the back there.
Pearland Brook, yeah, Sari, is it called a Sari Trail?
So we did locate that, we just haven't had a chance to, between now and like the end of last week and today to throw it on the plan. But we will add that to the plan before we were to submit the preliminary, the official preliminary plan to the board, showing those site features and the rest of the logging track paths that were out there that we walked. So we did take that into consideration, we have done the field work for that part of it, so we can show that on the plan before we get to that official dismissal. But that was the intent of tying to those, at least to that major path there.
So, Mr. Chairman, for me?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, just pointing out, I know you guys have done a lot of work on these plans, you've listened to the board up to this point, and you've actually incorporated a lot of their suggestions, recommendations. The one thing I don't see is the, well, so all these plans are pretty much the same. It's the same layout as was originally proposed to the board, other than the Taj Mahal version right here. It's interesting. What type of input have you guys had from your landscape architect to this point as far as how this, how this open-space residential development has been plotted out on this property? Because nothing's changed, from my viewpoint, nothing's changed on the layout since the landscape architect was hired.
So a couple of areas that he pointed out, one area that he made sure that we knew about in our survey crew located it when he was out there, there was a decent ledge outcropping, I want to say in this location here. So when I redid this road layout without the 100-foot buffer zone, obviously everything moved this way. I did put some more gentle curves within that roadway, and I think it's tough to see in a bigger scale because you're not, right, you're, if you look at it, there's, it looks like a straight line. But when we blow it up and we do a definitive plan, it's going to be at a 40 scale, right, and we're going to label all the curves on it. So I did put a couple of curves in the road to kind of put some curvature in the road, but as I stated at the last meeting, one thing that he and I talked about is, what doesn't show up on the plan is, we're going to have, obviously there's a vertical change in the road. It doesn't show in a plan view, but shows when obviously the road's built. So he didn't, he said put a couple gentle curves in the road, but from a standpoint of the actual grade, there's going to be some changing grade in there. So that doesn't pop up on the plan. But he did point out the area of ledge, so we did locate that. I tried moving the road to at least get the road construction away from that ledge, and that was something that we did locate in the field also when we located those paths. And then he obviously mentioned just, obviously he saw the paths too, so he told us to make sure that we locate those, and then when he, when we have a chance to show him our updated existing conditions plan, then he can kind of look at how he would lay out proposed paths, right? I think that's the real question and what the proposed network would be for this project. And so that's something that we would work with him on.
And so I guess that ties back into the process of laying out the open-space recreation plan, which is identified in the zoning code, which we've been over in the past meetings. And that process is identifying areas within the development that would best be suited for the development of houses. And then matching it up with a roadway system to access those houses, and then drawing in the lot lines for those houses, so.
It's, so I know one of the questions you had, were there any significant clumpings of trees out there? Because of the thinning or clearing they've done out there, right, that the previous landover has done, he didn't see any significant clumpings of trees or anything that, of that sort. So when he looked at where we were proposing the development, when he walked it and he had the plan and obviously walked the state area that we had out there and then the remainder of the site too, he came back and said there was no areas within the area that we're proposing to develop that he would necessarily change. The one area, like you said, that you really pointed out to me was just that ledge outcropping, to make sure that they, you know, we were aware of that, because obviously when we're trying to build this, to make sure that there were that large ledge outcropping there. But other than that, it's really the, like you said, the trail system that runs out here and then trying to tie into that, and then that's where I think he would be more involved to try to best tie in, you know, our openings here, and maybe he would adjust where we open and, but that's kind of where we left it.
And I think he should be involved with that. I also think he should be involved with how the layout of the subdivision is on the parcel, which I don't necessarily see, because I haven't seen any changes since he's been brought on or she's been brought on board. That was, that's my only concern. I can share with you, I have, she had the chairman, and he thought it might be a good idea, we do have a conceptual plan that was done in 2007 on this parcel. I actually just found it. It was in my predecessor's files, electronic files. I mean, if you don't mind, I'll, and I think it actually presents a decent plan. I mean, I'm not saying this is something that you want to consider in total, but it does kind of give, actually, if you want to pass this over to me.
Actually, one more coffee for the gentleman.
And just, just for the sake of envisioning what, I guess what I've kind of been talking about. It shows the trail system on the site, it shows common open space on the site. I mean, it does show a lot of roadway, so I, I'm a little, you know, but yeah, with the two cul-de-sacs that were shown in your, in your original plan before Haley and Ward were hired to take on the project. Again, just some food for thought. I just thought it was interesting when I pulled this up, because I had never seen it before, and I figured I'd share it with you anyways.
For what it's worth.
It's good to have, obviously, because it does sort of identify the same type of environmentally sensitive areas that we've identified. Because part of it also has to do with promoting some type of efficient design, because eventually, you know, the roadways, it's intended for the roadways to be turned over to the municipality. So that's one of the considerations that needs to be taken in as well.
Yeah, I think, I was thinking at the last meeting, before I even seen this plan, that what, if you brought the parcels closest to Century Way, you know, back to the property lines and got rid of the 100-foot buffer, that you could actually probably bump out that loop road a little bit to provide that necessary area between the middle, between the duplexes for that access point. But again, you're talking, you have-
Have them like this.
Yeah, so bump the back, well, the back parcel's out, yeah, and then so everything kind of widens out, and then you can get additional open space, actually like it shows on this right here. And/or alleyways access points for the duplexes.
So, two things, on the open space, so I guess the reason we didn't get into the open space as much in here in between those units is because I know originally when we came, it was the intent, right, to open, most of the open space was North County Land Trust, right? And so the intent, I think even with 100 buffer, they weren't excited about that. So we were trying to limit the amount of open space that would go to them. Obviously, creating a, on this version, creating some kind of green space for some kind of park for the residents to decide what they want to do there. Now, the only question, I guess, with regards to the alleyway, and from a standpoint of what we keep in push now is to reduce the amount of impervious space. You're asking for an additional driveway behind all these units, basically another road that's not a road, and that's creating additional impervious surface that we typically are being pushed away from. So I guess it's counterintuitive to what we're being always told, and I know it just, everybody keeps down lid, 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 right, less impervious surface cluster, and then putting an alleyway between units creates more impervious surface, so I just don't know if that's counterintuitive compared to what the regulation is pushing for. I mean, could we design around it? We can design around most everything, right, but it's just, that would be my only, I guess, negative against that, it creates more impervious surface. And again, ideally, the applicant would love to do single-family instead of duplexes. That's a preferred option. Now, if they were to do single-family, then we could talk about maybe doing a shared driveway for every two units if the grading works. Maybe that's something that with side entrances, maybe that would at least eliminate even some of the driveways too, right? Now we're cutting down the driveways, maybe to one driveway instead of two driveways, right?
Or maybe just do single-family homes in the middle, on the middle parcels.
Well, and that's, and that's really what we were trying to give you the different variations. Now, I want to point out with this one, we do show 78 units, but I only have, and I don't know, I think I saw Rob doing some math over there, on this one, I only have about an acre and, I want to say a tenth of an acre or maybe 1.2 acres for stone water. So once I start doing the stone water, the number of lots may have decreased by a couple lots, it may be 76, maybe 74. And my thought then is if we're going to lose lots, I'd rather lose them in the middle here and go back to that park area. But there are so many ways to, I guess, do this, right? We could, we could show a green space in the middle, but it doesn't, you know, kind of goes against what North County was looking for, the Land Trust was looking for, right? They were looking to have everything on the outside that abuts theirs. If the board tells us they want some green space in the middle, then that's, that's, you know, we'll take a look at that. The open space is going to, you know, if it's on the outside or inside, it doesn't really matter to us, to be honest with you. Right, we're just going to steal 40,000 square feet of open space here and put 40,000 square feet of open space somewhere else, or whatever that number ends up being.
Yeah, I just, I'm, to me, it's a lot of parcels right on top of each other without any type of breakup or, yeah, it's very, very good for, for the areas being developed. Now, obviously, there's a larger open space area around it, I get that, but can that be worked into the entire parcel? In a more creative manner, rather than it just, you know, square, 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 everything's so square, even the open space parcel that's created on the, on one of the plans is just a big square. Yeah, I guess, those are just my thoughts. Just to hand out the board.
When you were working with your landscape architect, speaking to that, it's about a half-acre open space, dead center on page, whatever it is, was there any particular vision for how that would look?
So, the way the, I don't know if I'm probably cutting Peter off on this one, the way the applicant wants to do it is, is to leave it up to the residents that move in there to determine what they want to do with that open space parcel, because it's going to be part of their association. And that's how Mr. Coyview has done it in the past, is giving it to the association to let them dictate what goes on there.
And based on experience, what sometimes can happen is the applicant and the board might envision a playground, or might envision, you know, blotching courts or something along those lines. And what ends up happening is, once the project is built out and it gets turned over to the unit owners, maintenance might become an issue, cost might become an issue, it kind of gets run down and starts to become an eyesore. So it seems to make more sense to identify areas and then let the unit owners figure out what they want to do with it, because it's going to be their money that's going to be paying to maintain it and to insure it and all that stuff. We might have an idea as to what the town and the board might prefer. We might be able to incorporate some preferences, but ultimately, we would want the decision to be with them so that they have some type of skin in the game, if you will, so that they're going to be able to maintain it, impose their homeowner's fees, and make sure that it is, doesn't become unmaintained and become an eyesore.
Board members.
There's always a few residents that will call the municipality with the expectation that the municipality will take care of those things, so.
Any questions or comments from the board members?
How do we decide?
Well, we don't necessarily, we don't pick a design. That's, that's up to the proponents to carry forward with design work. Do appreciate you taking our suggestions to heart, incorporating some open space, cutting alleyways, for lack of a better term, to reach the, the space in the back as, as we suggested. That's, that's, that's all very good and appreciated. Some of the lot sizes are larger, as we had also suggested. I'd like to see more, I'd like to see more involvement from the landscape architect in how this is actually being laid out. If at some point that individual could speak to us about their thoughts and their input on this beyond identifying, what did they do? They identified the conservation areas for you, they found some ledge, and what else did they do for you?
They were talking about the trails too, to make sure that we tie into all the trails.
Tying into the trails.
They want to, obviously, he wants to be involved with the layout of what gets done with regards to the new trails, to tie into that. That's what he was talking about. But from a standpoint, so I directed him on what Trevor had pointed out to us during the meeting, to make sure that he looked at for any significant clumping of trees, any other natural resources that would be of significance when he walked the property because of the, especially because of the clearing up, that there wasn't a lot of, I guess, natural clumpings or areas that he thought should be saved or protected, at least with regards to the area that we were developing. And then obviously, I think he was on the same page with regards to the wetlands and the water check protection district, and then try, like I said, trying to tie into the trails and leave the trails that are up on the top of the site the way they are. But we can, we can definitely invite him to the next meeting.
I think what we have on the site is really a mix of, we call them trails, but they were really logging roads or cutting roads that either the previous owner or previous owners were using to go out there and cut timber, as opposed to the real existing trail system that is up in the back. And it would become a question of getting the landscape architect's input on incorporating the logging roads and trailing system to get to the existing trails. That type of feedback we will get, and we will be able to get a better design and layout for you.
But that individual won't be having any, any input into the actual layout of lots or anything like that? That's not part of it?
No, he will.
Okay. I think for my part, and I can't speak-
He or she will.
He or she, the individual. I think for my part, I would like to see that next, the input from the landscape architect on your designs, and take it from there. We're getting, we're getting closer. Much closer, and this is quite productive. Mr. Vice Chairman.
What was your intention to put duplexes in with a mixture of single-families? Because from the beginning, I think all I saw was single-family homes, and now there's a mixture. What was your rationale for that?
Couple of things. Primarily, it was based on some of the feedback that we got from some of the board members. The regulation does allow or provide for, you know, a mix of residential options, depending on what type of residential units are available in the town, what might be more affordable for certain residents or people that are moving up. So it would really be based on preference by the board. If multiple duplex units are located within there, it's only because that was part of the discussion we had with board members.
I'm just trying to think of, for lack of a better word, the type of person that would prefer a duplex as opposed to a single-family home. would prefer a duplex as opposed to a single-family home. I'm thinking, and I really don't know, but I'm just thinking, the type of person that does a great deal commuting to work would probably prefer a duplex as opposed to a single-family. I don't know, I'm just thinking, because I commuted for over 20 years to Boston, but I had a single-family home, so...
I think it's also a price point.
I think, I think a lot of it has to do with a price point, and what people can afford, sometimes they might be first-time or entry-level individuals that buy, versus someone who might have a unit to sell, or another, be moving from another community, coming to Gardner, that would buy a single-family home. But it just offers, it potentially offers a better mix of housing for the community.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so it has nothing to do with the unit count? Because I'm sensing a theme here, 76 units on each one of your, well, at least a few proposals that we received prior to tonight. So, I mean, it also has something to do, I think, with the unit count?
Yeah, economics of the project, correct, yes.
Okay, thanks.
In the grand scheme of things, yes.
All right, we thank you. Please continue your liaison with Mr. Baurgard. We would like to see one more round with the landscape architect present, so we can have discussions with that particular individual about your plans, and we're getting that much closer. We appreciate your continued cooperation and your work on this.
So, next meeting will be the second Tuesday of June?
Which is the 13th?
June 13?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and would there be any, I'm not recommending this, I'm just thinking out loud, throwing out more ideas, trying to help us along, hopefully. Would there be openness to bumping out that back road and kind of having a little more of a meandering road system off of the main road, to open up an open space area like you see on that concept plan?
Center units?
Yeah.
Center units, or inside of the wall?
Yeah.
Is that just...
Yeah. Just for, as, as another concept, Wes, at the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, you had mentioned something about getting some feedback like that from one of your, from the landscape architect, but it didn't go any further than that, I'm not sure. But you did mention that meandering road, further on into the rear of the site, not necessarily the rear, but beyond where those, where the back lot lines are now, yeah.
Yeah, we could bring it up, yeah.
Just a thought, I know it kind of goes into where you're looking at, the open space, because that is really nice open space, but I think it'll also break up, open up the development a little bit, and, and, you know...
I think as long as they can stay outside of the, obviously, the primary areas of conservation and sensitive areas, and some of the secondary areas, yeah, I mean, it's definitely possible, we can look at it.
And now that you, he's, he or her has been out there, I think you can...
Has a better idea of the site, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
I concur with that.
No, I guess one question, and I don't know, the board members, and we obviously showed 100-foot buffer, no 100-foot buffer, I mean, is there any...
We kind of took the lead from the Land Trust, because I think the individual that, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my impression was that she really was not happy with that.
She didn't see much value in it, from, from a open space standpoint, I think that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, but personally, I thought you misspoke for us, I do like the buffer for future reference, I mean, we never, once that is built, you'll never get that, that piece of buffer back, and who knows what's going to happen in 10, 20 years, I mean, maybe somebody will come through there with a nice trail system. But personally, that's my personal opinion, you give that away, that buffer, so that's on page six, obviously, the page before there, unless...
So more along this, this type of a layout?
The buffer, I know she said, well, they don't want to maintain it, well, she doesn't have to maintain it, but at least it would be there in, like, the future, future reference, maybe, future. Once you give it up, you never get it back.
It's, it's just going to become somebody else's backyard.
I understand that, if you put the same scenario, if you bring that back together, they're all going to do the same, they're all going to push, but that's...
But it's going to be owned by the Land Trust, though, that's the problem. So the Land Trust is going to own it, and then people are going to use it for their own private property, that's the problem, I think that's where she was going with it. And I can't put words in her mouth, but I can see the concern.
Right, and I understand that's what she was saying also, I just hate to see that go, just...
But it's important, it's important to hear that, so that we, because we want to try to narrow it down, and that's what the discussion, that's what the intent of the discussions are for, because once we submit the application, we have to have the conventional layout, and we have to have the preliminary plan for you to approve the special permit. So, I think we are, you know, these discussions are very helpful, and it does give us, you know, the feedback we need, so that before we really get into the hot engineering, we're not just spending tons of money on engineering designs, and redesign, and redesign, and redesign, so this is very helpful.
Yes, and it's certainly not...
We'll definitely keep that in mind with, with the buffer, so...
We certainly don't want to put your client in that position where, you know, they're spending gobs and gobs of money on redesigning wheels, so, again...
And we might, we might have a discussion about the number of units, so...
But I agree with Mr. Corby, I think it's, the buffer's a good thing. I just think it allows you to do a little more on the other side of the development, to open it up a little more, maybe even if it's like a 50-foot, right? I mean, if...
Change, instead of 100-foot, make it 50-foot or more.
Or some type of a buffer.
So you just don't lose it, that's my opinion.
Not eliminating entirely.
That's correct, who knows, the recent 40 years, we might not be here, but somebody might want to do something with it, I don't know.
It really, really affects the multifamily, the multifamily units, it's the single-family are going to get this, that extra land that they kind of already use anyway.
Right, but they go to that rock wall, but then...
But they'll, they'll always get some of that, that part of it, it would be really the multifamily people that are...
And obviously, when you do a design, you could, whatever a design would decide, I mean, you could always, in the back of these people's houses, you put post, that's the, that's where the back stops, I guess, I don't know.
Or maybe even do 100-foot further down here where the multis are, and then a 50-foot here, and then you can actually put a little more curvature in your roadway.
Yeah, now the world's your oyster, I mean, design away.
Anything else, and the other members good with that, to go out or...
Gentlemen? Stowe, also?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Wait, wait, hold on. I heard many. As far as that buffer, and whether it's Land Trust or someone else, I was thinking, if you kept the buffer, you wanted to put a trail for the residents, keep it under the residents rather than the trust, so they get a little less, but I think you end up with something unusable for the residents, just a thought.
Having it be part of the homeowners association, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think it shows it on the concept that I shared.
Yes, I was...
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, maybe not as...
People that are blocking the trails from the residents saying, they get out of my backyard. Yeah, makes sense, yes.
All right, excellent, this is very productive, we'll look forward to the next one.
Kelly, please. Remember Kelly?
Hang on, Bob, I'll carry you.
KK's on the check by.
All right, gentlemen, next meeting, Tuesday, June 13th, sound good? Any conflicts?
We have other stuff on your agenda, right?
But Jess is in already, right?
Actually, I cut him off. Okay, you're on, Bob.
I make a motion, will you adjourn? Again.
Do we have a second? Motion made and seconded, to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion passed, thank you very much, everyone, we'll see you next month.